Let's call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. We will turn some time over to, actually, if we could all stand first and have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Annie. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A.3 to discuss any agenda items. The following items may be discussed and considered and decisions made relating to thereto. Item 1A, council ratification of a prior action to approve bird scooter agreement. And once again, I owe an apology. I mistook that for a motion, and it was not really legally a motion. So that's what this is all about. I will continue to read it, though. At the October 3rd council meeting during the bird scooter discussion, a proper motion to approve the item was not on, on the, on the floor, yeah. On the floor. Men, my eyes are playing games with me today. For a, for a second or a vote. While the council voted on this subject with the intent to pass the agreement, it needs to follow the proper forum. Vice Mayor, help me out. My eyes, yeah, my eyes are not good. I should have brought my reading glasses.
The agreement is attached. Staff recommends, oh, I'm sorry. The intent at this meeting is to ratify that prior action pursuant to ARS 38-431.05B. The agreement is attached. Staff recommends approval.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that, Vice Mayor. And that's why it's important to get lots of sleep at night. Last night was not a good night, and it affects your vision, especially when you're old. So, in a, in an effort to correct that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the bird scooter agreement, as we had talked about in that prior council meeting. Do we have a second?
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Neat.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is actually approving, this is actually approving the agreement with what we did earlier. So, do you want, we can vote again if you'd like.
Well, we voted no.
Right.
Yeah, we're just ratifying what we did last week.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you were to vote yes, you're supporting the ratification that states what you're doing.
No, thanks for the clarification.
From the last meeting. I should have been more clear. I'm sorry.
So, we want to make the motion to agree with what we voted on in that council member, that meeting.
Yeah, you're just, you're just making a motion to ratify the current, the prior action.
Okay. So, are we good?
You're good. Yeah, I think, why don't you, why don't we just, why don't we restate what we did?
Because, you know, you brought up a good point. So, to, let's have a motion, anyway, we have a motion to agree with what that decision was in that council meeting.
You have a motion to ratify the action you took.
To ratify the action that we took in that council meeting. And then we have a second. So, all those in favor of that?
Who's the second?
I have a second.
Cherish.
Cherished it, yes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thanks again. Item B, council vacancy applicant interviews. A vacancy, a vacancy was created on the Kingman City Council after the recent resignation of Councilmember Cameron Pat. ARS 4235 defines the process the city will follow to fill the vacant council position. City Council received 17 applications from the City of Kingman residents. One applicant has withdrawn, and there are 16 applications attached for council consideration. Residency and voter registration have been confirmed. The interview lineup has been determined by a random drawing of names after the application period closed. Council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A.1 to review the application, discussion, and possible action. And of course, Annie, remind us again that we've actually had two more people, one more person withdrawn?
Yes, Mayor. So, of those initial applicants, Timothy Skipper has withdrawn, Dr. Wendy Ressinger has withdrawn, and Michael Cobb has withdrawn. Applicant Elliot Shalou is not able to attend this evening, but he did still want to have his application considered.
Considered. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that clarification. So, continuing on then, our first applicant is Mr. Ron Jewett. If Ron, if you'd like to come up and, and we're, basically, we're going to give you three minutes. If you feel that you need to, want to share some more comments, yes, if you'd sit right there. And be sure to turn that mic on for us. We'll give you three minutes. We're going to try to hold everybody to a five-minute total. Otherwise, we would be here all night. So, work with us on that. I know some of the council members do have some questions. But, Mr. Jewett, we'll turn some time over to you.
You all, push the button. Don now, green light? Okay. Sorry, Ken. So, you all have my application, right?
We do.
I don't know what more to tell you. Sorry, I've been on.
Okay. Counselor Savage, I know, has a question he wanted to throw out there, putting you on the hot spot to begin with, but everybody, this, I think he wants to apply to everybody.
Yes, I do, and thank you. As you see up here, we're all elected officials. And unfortunately, we had someone that had to drop out, and so now we have to fill a position. What gets me is that last election, there was only two of us on the ballot. I would like to know that if you are selected, do you intend to fill out and run again for the remainder of that term, and why weren't you two on the ballot? You're all going to get it.
What was the last part? Why what?
Why weren't you, why didn't you not run last year if you're interested in it now?
Okay. Good question.
Really quickly.
In my, uh...
Excuse me, sir. Can I just have you pull that microphone forward? Yeah, it has a very small cone, so we have to make sure the people online can hear. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. In my application, I even said, I said, I've been on planning commissions and city councilmen and economic development committees in several states. And I was asked by many people to, to put my name in, to help. And my thing is, why wasn't I on it? Because I really didn't have no intention of doing this. But what really intrigued me about doing this, it's definitely a one-year commitment. And if, if by Mar, I guess April will make the decision, correct? If by March, I feel like I'm not part of the team, and I'm not on the right side of the team, I probably won't run. If I feel like I'm in with you and everything's well, I'd probably stay on for two years. But I don't know how, you know, because I've been on planning commissions and city council before, sometimes you just feel like you're on the wrong side of the, the track. And I don't want to do that for four years if I'm on the wrong side of the track. Does that make sense? So...
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
I do. Hi, Ron.
Hi.
Thank you for being here today, and thank you for, for applying. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the number of people that we have that are interested. I have two questions for you. One being, what do you see as Kingman's greatest challenge at this moment in time?
Interesting. I kind of felt that question was going to come. It's interesting. That's hard for me to say, sitting back here looking at, at, you know, I'm not, I can't see the macro. I can see the, the minor parts, you know? I can only tell you what the citizens that talk to me have said, what they're really worried about. They're worried about the roads, of course, you know, and they're worried about revenue. You know, what, is there enough revenue? Is the revenue not being budgeted right? And how can we fix the roads? Those are the two things that people always ask me. And I say, well, looking from outside, looking in, appears the city might have a revenue problem. And I don't know if that's how you're going to fix that problem, but there's ways, there's ways to look at it. And again, I haven't been involved with what you've really done here to know, but those, those are the two things that I get hit with a lot, you know, about, why isn't the city fixing the roads? And, and, you know, where's the money going? And it's like, well, have you asked the questions? You know, I mean, if you're really worried about it, ask that question, and you'll get some answers, you know? I think it's even a matter of public record. You can go and you can see the budget, right? So, yeah.
Thank you for that. You had a lot of my questions answered in your letter, so I appreciate that. My second question is, what are your intentions in making Kingman a better community?
Well, is you work as a team to try to, try to make it better. And when, when I was on the city council before, the most, the one thing I really tried to do was listen to the citizens and figure out what the problems are, and bring them to the city council. And as a team, we, we worked out the problems, you know, and that's really all you can do. You know, you work with the mayor, work with the city manager, work with the council members, work with the constituents. It's just, you know, it's, it's a tough job. I mean, there's so many ways you can turn left, turn right, to know what to do, but you got to work together and try to make it happen. I, I think if I came in here and tell you this is why I wanted to want to fix this, that's the wrong way to go. That's, that's not it. It's, it's what can we do as a team to make it better? And it's hard for me, I mean, I know, it probably puts me in a very weak position, but I haven't really been involved with what you're doing, to know what you've been doing. But I'm a quick, I'm a quick learner, because I've sat where you've sat many times. But I just think it's important to listen to the city, you know, and try to figure out what's, what they need and what they want, and try to make it work.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for me, Mayor.
Okay. Counselors, any other questions? You do? Okay, Counselor.
And, and this is for all the applicants. In the event that the things that happened in 2000 were to come around again, where do you stand on business shutdowns and forced masking?
Say that again. Excuse me?
I said, in the event that we had another pandemic...
Right, right, right.
Where do you stand on forced masking and business shutdowns?
Well, that's a, that's an interesting question. I really have a hard time with forced masking. I, I, I don't think the science is there, and I probably have a lot of people, they're going to hate me because of that. And, but you, you have to do what's right for the city, and what, you know, what the, what the professionals tell you. But that's a tough thing. I, but I'm, I'm, I'm for as open as we can be. I can say that, you know? I mean, unless the governor comes in and says you have to do it, I'd be, I'd be leaning towards the, let's stay open if I could.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jewett. I don't think there's any other questions. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Jed Noble?
I got to step out.
Yeah, Mr. Jewett had already let us know that he needed to take off to grandson's up in Las Vegas, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Have a safe trip. Jed, glad you're here.
Hello. So...
Be sure to pull that mic close to you. You have to sneak right into it.
It's like right in my face.
I know, I know.
So, yeah, I thought we were going to be going up to the podium, so I guess this is kind of more of a Q and A, and I think you guys have all probably read my application, and just happy to answer any questions you have.
Did you want to address the one that, starting with Mr. Savage, and remind, remind us, Noble, if you need to?
As far as running in the '24 election campaign, so I guess the reason I'm here, and, you know, I was involved with many of the council people recently, over the past, I don't know, six or seven months, to improve the development process. And I've talked to a couple of the council people about possibly running in '24. Right now, I'm, I'm here to continue improving that development process that the city has with the local development community. So, specific, the specific city departments that I'm interested in improving would be the building, planning and zoning, and engineering. So, since March, I've seen vast improvements to those departments and their services to the city. So, as far as '24 goes, I'd say that I'm undecided at this point.
Okay. What about not running for 2020?
So, I guess I would go back to identifying problems and trying to come up with solutions to improve city services. So, in 2020, those issues weren't prevalent at the city at that time.
Let me clarify, 2022?
Same response.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Noble? And Cherish, do you have?
I do. I want to thank you for your application as well, Jed. I also want to thank you for serving on P and Z. I think you're doing a fantastic job on P and Z. I, I hear, or I heard what you said about development services. Is that what you feel our biggest challenge is in Kingman at this time?
Development services, yeah, providing, improving the review process and approval process with the city, and then obviously, the capital improvement projects. I think those are specifically the interchanges, the A dot interchange that's going to be going in, those, those things, yeah.
Okay. That's all for me, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Ward?
Same question, Ron, on, or Jed, on forced masking and shutdowns. Where do you stand?
So, I would hope that if that were to happen again, it would, so, as a, as a government, I think the most power that we, the people, have is the local government, and I, I would hope that the local government would have the option to implement or not implement something like that. As far as forced masking goes, I don't think that the people should be forced to do anything, personally. I think it should be a choice, an individual choice. So...
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor? I think, or they can, yeah, I mean, yeah, we're fine. I think timewise, well, it's, Annie will keep us in line. How's that timewise? So, if, do you have a statement?
Well, I was just going to say, maybe if everybody at the end wants to just give, like, a quick one-minute elevator speech, what, you know, what, what do you want us to know about you?
So, I could just do mine right now, if that works.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I, I think my, my qualities to fill the open seat, specifically, my involvement with the development community, on a regular, very regular basis, I work with many of the city departments. I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and like I said before, I've previously, I've been working with many of you, you all, to try to implement changes to the development process.
Okay. Jed, thank you. And once again, thank you for your, your positive praise about Engineering Department, show, you know, bringing to attention that, you have seen improvement. We appreciate that.
The Engineering Department is vastly improved, vastly. It's been, it's been a great change, and I, I thank you all for, you know, working towards a, you know, a positive change.
Thanks for bringing that forward. Okay. Thank you. Pamela Horstmeyer?
Well, I do have a prepared statement, so fasten your seatbelt. Good afternoon, Mayor Watkins. Vice Mayor Samley, thank you. City Council Members Scott Staley, Ward, Savage, and Mr. Walker. My name is Pamela Horstmeyer. I'm applying for the vacant seat on the city council. By the way, I haven't had a job interview for 36 years, so I'm very grateful to be here today. I have lived in Kingman just three years come January. I was born in Reno, Nevada, and lived there until my husband Ray and I relocated here, and it took me no time at all to fall in love with Kingman. Reno used to be small, but it isn't any longer, and I watched Reno grow and then grow some more, much like Kingman. Even though I'm not a native Kingmanite, I've experienced what is happening here. Having said that, I am pro-growth, responsible growth, and I want to be an active part of this community, doing my civic duty. I feel like if we, we could think big city and act small town, it's a recipe for progress and success. By think big, I mean innovative, active, alive, all the while remembering the Andy Divine Kingman. My father was a county commissioner for two terms, and I watched him govern. He was fair as a county representative, just as he was a good, fair, and considerate parent. I emulate my father in these ways. I listen, I consider someone else's point of view, then weigh my decisions before I come to a conclusion. I've always wanted to follow in his footsteps, and with the appointment to the city council, I will be. My work life was with Washoe County for 27 years. I've had very deep-dive background checks, as I worked for the District Attorney's Office, where I assist, I assisted with the investigators serving subpoenas and other, other paperwork that wasn't very popular. In my eight years at the Sheriff's Department, I did the background check and preliminary applications for concealed weapons permits. I worked both part-time and full-time at the Registrar or Voters Office, encompassing two different presidential elections, hiring and training board workers that manned the polls on every election, as well as representing our department in the naturalization ceremonies as new citizens took their oath of legal citizenship. I bring life experience, open eyes, integrity, commitment, and eagerness to learn, and thank you again for this opportunity.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Savage?
Yes.
I was not eligible in 2022 because I hadn't been here long enough, and I, by all means, intend to pursue the office in 2024.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes. I, I did read about your passions in your letter to the council, so I appreciate that. That was quite a few of my questions. You said in your, your letter that you have been a resident and registered voter in Mojave County for almost three years, and an active member of our community. You've witnessed firsthand the positive impact that local government can have on people's lives. Can you tell me what in specific you have witnessed in how our government is working for our citizens?
And I think that's part of what made me fall in love with Kingman, is, first of all, I said, I've come to several city council meetings, and I watch you guys work together, and I was so impressed with that, how you all communicate with each other. And I've seen your opinions change, and it was, it was really neat to watch you guys work in congruency with each other. And as far as watching the roads change, watching people's attitudes with improvements downtown on Beale Street, every time a new business opens, people are elated in the community, some not, depending on if it's another restaurant or something. Just, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Counselors? Smiley, your mask?
I would, I would go kicking and screaming. I believe businesses should have stayed open. I watched friends in Reno lose their livelihood. I watch people in other states where they had no mask mandates soar, and I think if people want to wear a mask, they should. Yes, sir.
Counselor Staley?
Was there anything else that you want us to know? I, I know you already gave us your, your speech, but if there was anything that popped up?
The only other thing I, I also think is that people want, again, the small town is what made me fall in love with Kingman. People want the small-town feeling, but they still want amenities. And you know what the Rolling Stones say, "You might not get everything you want, but you get what you need." Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Yes, sir.
Jim Dykens. And as Jim is coming up, I wanted to let everybody know, obviously, you are more than welcome to stay here. As you notice, there is a long list, and some of you have had to leave. If you do need to leave, you'll still be notified after we get back from executive session and make our decision, so don't feel that you have to stay here. We totally understand, sometimes there are other commitments that come up. So, Mr. Dykens?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, my name is Jim Dykens. I would like to review a few of the things that are in my letter of interest. I retired three and a half years ago, after serving 42 years with the Fire Department. I am a veteran and proudly served in the United States Air Force for eight years as a firefighter, receiving an honorable discharge. I returned to work for the Air Force as a civilian firefighter for an additional nine years. We moved to Kingman in November 1994, when I was hired as Fire Marshal for what was then called the Walupi Valley Fire Department, working there for eight and a half years, working under the direction of Chief Reichenbach. I then accepted the position of Fire Marshal for the Bull Hit City Fire Department and moved to Bull Hit City because of residency requirements. Twelve years later, the Fire Board changed those residency requirements, which allowed us to move back to Kingman. We bought our home here in Kingman in January of 2015, and have lived in Kingman since. During my time in Bull Hit City, I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for approximately nine years, three or four of those years as the commission's chairman. With my knowledge of fire and building codes, and my experience of serving with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I feel like I am a perfect fit and have a great desire to fill the vacant position on the city council. My life has been spent in service to the public and communities where I've lived. I am very pro-emergency services. I'm very pro on seeing our beautiful city grow with additional industry, commerce, and tourism. I am excited to see the possibility of the Kingman Airport Industrial Park expanding, which would allow some of this growth to become a reality. I have pulled the packet from the city to run for the city council in 2024. It is for the two-year term and will not interfere with or affect the four members of council that are going to be running for reelection. I am an open-minded person and have always taken into consideration both sides of an issue and how it will affect the community before I make a decision. I've been happily married for over 45 years to my wife Cindy. We have eight children and 30 grandchildren. We were foster parents for several years, where we adopted four of our children. I brought what I call my "I love me" book, which provides all of my documentation and certifications for you to review if you wish. I ask all of you to vote for me to serve with you on city council. I appreciate your time, and I am ready to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Jim. I know Sean, Mr. Dykens, answered one of your pre-questions, but prob, maybe reiterating. Okay, you're good, then.
Well, to answer one that I don't think I answered, why didn't I run in 2022? Was, I was recovering from major back surgery. After retirement, my body kind of fell apart, and I needed a total overhaul, so to speak. So, I've had that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Beyond public safety, what are your intentions for making Kingman a better community?
Well, like I said, I'm very pro on seeing the city grow through industry, through commerce, through tourism. In any way that I can be supportive in that direction and help in that direction, I want to be there for it. I support the city growing. We, we need additional income. Costs are going to continue to go up. Unfortunately, if budgets stay the same, it's difficult to, to meet the needs of the city. So, if we have more business come in, if we have more people coming in, that means more sales tax, more income for the city to do the things that we need to do and want to do.
So, would you say that that would be Kingman's greatest challenge at this moment? Or do you have something else in mind?
I think, I think that would be probably... I think that would be probably my opinion of what the biggest challenge is of the city and to maintain within budget.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ward or Councillor Sayley? Councillor Ward's answer question about masks?
Masks? I don't believe anybody should be forced to wear them if they so choose to wear them, of course. That's their right. Forced closure of businesses, I don't agree with that at all, of course not. I don't believe the city should have the ability to close or enforce what we've talked about. On the other side of it, if the state comes down, obviously, we don't have a choice. We would have to follow what the state mandated, but locally, absolutely not. Keep the city running.
Thank you.
Councillor Sayley?
Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I think I pretty much covered everything, other than, again, I really would like to fill a seat, and I plan on running for it next year.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to set this with somebody or pretend I didn't bring it?
I think you actually spelled it out pretty well in your resume and paperwork that you turned in. I mean, and I'm sure you have supporting documentation there, so I think we're probably good. Right, council? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, Mr. Larry Renfro.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. Obviously, you know I'm Larry Renfro. What I bring here today is I'm probably the most average Joe in the group. I'm the guy that...
Larry, can you pull that, I'm sorry, can you pull that mic closer to you? You just pull the whole thing, there you go. I know you have to have it right in front of your face, unfortunately, so.
I am the average Joe citizen. I'm a local contractor here. I spent multiple years in public service, roughly about 22 years, just here in this town. I've taught at the college, I've taught at the elementary schools, so I've worked with kids from preschool age all the way up to adults. I'm deep-rooted in this community. I actually came after this position, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm a little bit nervous. I came after this vacant spot because, once again, I seen the opportunity to make a difference. I've spent my whole career here, even after leaving the fire service and EMS. I continued to do whatever I could in the community, such as working with some outreach programs, trying to work with some veterans programs, things of that nature, nothing specific and nothing long-term, but I have continued to be an eye in the city here amongst the citizens. And I have to say, I've received multiple phone calls and messages telling me, hey, great, it's great that you're stepping up. We'd like to see you in that spot, and you have our support. So, again, I'm just the average Joe. I didn't create a speech for y'all or anything like that, I'm willing to answer any questions that I can answer. I don't have any planning and zoning background, I don't have any city council background, I'm not a politician by any means, but I do have a proven track record of having the ability to work in a group independently, do the research, do the homework, spend the time. I'm the guy that's not going to talk about it, that's why I'm here. I'm the guy that's going to come and do something and be a part of something.
Sounds like a pretty good statement there, even part of your closing statement. I mean, that's all involved in it. So, Mr. Savage, your question, of course, referring to thoughts about why you didn't run in '22 and are you going to run again in '24?
I do plan, if I, if I'm, excuse me, if I fill this vacated seat, yes, yes, sir, I will be, plan to be on the ballot for the next term. The reason I didn't do it in 2022, as I, just to be totally honest, I didn't have an interest in it in that time.
Honesty is a good thing.
I'm a brutally honest person.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for being so honest and being an average Joe. I like average Joes. What are your intentions in making Kingman a better community? Can you give me some specifics?
As far as working with the city council, working with a council member, trying to look at this growth and development that's been going on, I've been trying to attend city council meetings, kind of sit in the back, take my little notes here and there, so that I know what's going on, so I don't come in here completely uninformed. But again, I don't have a background in planning and zoning, things like that. What I do have is an ear to the citizens of this community. Like, I have my ear to the ground, and people talk to me about the things that they're after. There's a lot of people in this town that spend a lot of time talking about it, and/or they'll come in front of your council and talk and talk and talk, but they never really do anything about it. What I think we need to do is I think we need to get out to the citizens, whether it's us or we figure out a reach-out program or outreach program so that we can get the citizens to come in and say something. Instead of being out there around town talking about how horrible the city is, or how horrible this department is or that department is, come in and talk about it. And I would, and I do this every day, when somebody complains about something, why don't you go to city council and talk about it? Stop talking, stop saying things to other people and be a doer. Come out and act, because if we can get the citizens involved in this, then instead of them questioning whether or not, okay, why did we spend the money on the signs? My answer is, do you not see the development here? Do you not see the growth coming here? Do you not see the value in that growth? You know, we're, what I see is we're reaching out to the tourists, not only to the tourists, but the citizens of the community who are paying attention, like myself, and like the rest of these people sitting behind me. We're all paying attention, and so when somebody says something like that, I tell them, get involved in it. Go out and get involved. Instead of talking bad about it, let's get the citizens involved and get them to put in their two cents, so to speak. Not everybody's, I mean, as you guys know, not everybody is going to have the common sense to stand up and not just rattle off all of their issues. But if we can get at least half of them to come up and have some common sense about it, to have some manageability and respect about it for one or another, instead of turning it into an argument, I think we need to get the citizens involved. I mean, I understand the city council has a job to do, but ultimately, it's up to the citizens to help this growth, because without them, it's a fight, it's a constant fight. I'm willing to be that guy. If I'm the only guy on the city council, if I take this seat, or if you guys are, if I'm granted this seat, I have no problem being the guy reaching out to the city, reaching out to the citizens of this town. Come look, what do you got? Bring it to me. You know, instead of talking about it, bring it to me. Let's do something about it.
All right, thank you. And my next question is, we are a very pro-growth council with economic development in the forethought of a lot of the decisions that we are making. Can you tell me your thoughts on that?
I'm absolutely pro-growth with responsibility. As long as we're doing what's right for the citizens of this community and what's right for this community, not just about the dollar, but about what's right for this community. If we grow this community the right way, the way that you guys have been, and again, those of us with a little bit of common sense, we'll say, yeah, we can see what's going on, we can see where the value is in all of this. I absolutely see the value. I've already raised my kids, so one of the biggest concerns for parents in this town is that it's always the same thing, there's nothing to do for my kids. I'm going to start a business. I did, you know? So, again, it's, for me, I'm absolutely pro-growth, but I'm pro-growth with responsibility and with teamwork, so that we can do it the right way.
All right, great. And what would you say our Kingman community is our greatest challenge at this moment in time?
As I said, the citizens of this town are not involved. They're involved in a manner of belittling the town. They're involved in a matter of their issues, only their issues, not the greater picture. So if we can get them involved and understand what it is and kind of consolidate it all, make some common sense out of it, and explain to them, this is what's going on, you need to get involved, then you really understand why this money is going out for roads, why this money is going out for signs, why are we doing this, why are we doing this, why are we making these decisions? Let's make them fully aware of it. But in order to make them aware of it, we got to get them involved.
Thank you. That's all for me, Mayor.
Okay. And of course, Mr. Ward's question about masking.
I'm absolutely against mask mandates. I'm absolutely against closing businesses, as I mentioned, after leaving the fire and EMS service. I started, my soon-to-be-wife at that time told me, what are you going to do? You can't sit still for two seconds. I said, well, I started handing in a business. So, in that, through all of the COVID session or COVID time, I can honestly tell you, unless I was forced to do that by going into business, I didn't wear a mask. I don't believe that any American citizen should be forced to do anything. You know, we have a constitution in this country, we have the right to do what we want. If you feel like you want to wear a mask, then you should wear a mask. If that makes you feel better, then that's what you should do. But as far as closing my business or closing any other business, this is still a small town, and we could keep it a small town and still grow it. But if we're going to close down businesses, there goes some of our revenue. Why would we do that? That doesn't make any sense.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sayley, anything?
Just very quickly, I remember you coming to speak at Call of Public not that long ago, and I wonder if your code enforcement issue has gotten any better?
Absolutely.
It has?
Absolutely. And I've been working hand-in-hand with Lieutenant Bryce on becoming part of the abatement agreement, being a business that they can reach out to. So, instead of just trying to throw out forbid for these abatement projects, he said, you're a general contractor, why would you want to haul out trash? I said, whatever it takes, let's make it right. So they've completely cleared out the property across the street from me, they've taken care of the property over here, we're currently in enforcement with the properties around me, but it's gotten much better, much, much better.
I'm so glad to hear that.
And like I said, absolutely, Lieutenant Bryce, I can't say enough. Like, he's just, he's been right there the whole time. He asked my personal cell number, I have his personal cell, which I'm not supposed to tell you, but either way, again, I'm brutally honest. So, the bottom line is, yes, it's worked out great. And that's just one more reason what, as soon as I found out about this vacated spot, not because I'm a politician and because I follow everything the city council does, some people and some citizens in town who knew me, who have known me for years, called me and said, hey, you know what, we're kind of, you know, camera pass stepped down. I said, no, sorry, I did not. He goes, you know, we were kind of throwing some names around, and your name came up, and everybody stopped talking and said, yeah, that's the guy. This is why I'm here, because since then, since it's gotten out and all of our names came up on the radio, then I got more messages, I have a lot of support for this community, and I've spent a lot of time in this community doing things to further advance that. Whatever I can continue to do will be great. All I need is an opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry, appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
I don't see Abby Nazer here. Annie, she hasn't communicated at all?
I haven't received any information from her.
I do know that she's having a family, I guess, call it emergency. Her father is sick, so that could be why. I'm sure she would like us to consider her application, since she hasn't called to withdraw it. Okay. Jengus, how are you? And Jengus, so that we all know, what's the proper way to say your last name? I apologize.
It's Eric.
Eric, okay.
Yes. I'm going to be reading from my phone, so pardon me. Good afternoon, citizens of Kingman, council members, vice mayor and mayor. I sit before you today as a well-qualified candidate deeply rooted in our beloved hometown of Kingman. Kingman is not just a place on the map for me, it's a town where I grew up, where I'm raising my family, where my business thrives, and where I've witnessed the incredible potential that our community holds. My journey as a young citizen of Kingman has provided me with a unique insight into the challenges and opportunities that lie before us. My business is situated at the heart of the Kingman Airport Industrial Park, which is a hub of economic activity in our town. I am currently in the process of building a couple warehouses out at the park, and as I've embarked on this endeavor, I've personally experienced the complications caused by the hazy borders between the city and county jurisdictions at the airport. I've seen firsthand the impact of policies and decisions on local businesses. I'm committed to finding solutions that promote growth and prosperity in a streamlined manner. I am also a parent invested in ensuring that Kingman remains a place where our children can grow and thrive. I am proud to say I graduated from the Kingman Academy of Learning, a semi-private charter school that challenged me in STEM skills, but also provided my friends with vocational tools to grow into the trades and take up roles of leadership in our community. I like to see an expansion of these types of resources for parents that will provide students the choices between college and well-paying, long-term jobs in the trades. I like to make sure our existing assets, such as Mojave Community College, and our partnerships with state universities, continue to grow so our citizens can climb an affordable ladder to higher education. I envision a self-sustainable Kingman where families can find the support and the resources they need to build a bright future for themselves and their loved ones. Recently, I've been admiring the cohesion and positive relationship between the different bodies of Kingman's local government and how they've been working together to raise the tide for all of us. This is an opportunity that I like to take advantage of to streamline policies that protect our assets, such as groundwater for our future generations, and open corridors that enable growth, like the Rancho Santa Fe interchange. We, as a town, have everything we need to work together more effectively, to bridge gaps, to think outside the box, and be resourceful, and to make decisions that benefit the entire community in a positive and efficient manner. In this election, the city has a choice. I'd like to suggest a new voice, fresh ideas, and a passionate commitment to our town that will mirror this bright new era. I envision Kingman growing with innovative, stable, and lean ideas that will promote tourism to the downtown area, attract businesses to the Kingman Airport Industrial Park, and create a community where residents of all ages can enjoy and flourish. Lastly, I hold a bachelor's degree from a highly respected Arizona university, reflecting my commitment to thoughtful decision-making that would help me analyze and make suggestions for the long-term health of our community, is a dedication to practical, focused solutions that I will bring to the council. Let's work together to make Kingman the best it can be. I am Jengus Eric, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jengus. Councillor Savage's question, of course, referring to...
So after I got back from university, I took over the family business. After I took over the family business, I found the love of my life and got married. After I got married, we had a child, and we are about to go into our second year. So, you know what it's like with a baby, and now that we are hitting that milestone, I think that I am ready. This was a perfect opportunity. I look forward to starting a long-term relationship with city management and city leadership, so this won't be the first time and it won't be the last time, with or without, whether I get this or not.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor?
You covered about everything that I was going to ask, so I appreciate that. You told me what your intentions were for the community. The one thing I'd like you to expand upon, though, is what is the one challenge that you see at this moment in time for our Kingman community?
So, right now, the one that's been like in my face consistently has been at the Kingman Airport Park. And it's because like, half the, like, the roads are owned by county half the time, and half the time they're managed by the city, and you'll have these stretches of pavement where half of it's paved and half of it's not. I do like to see Bennett fighting for the grants to get those paved, but there needs to be some sort of annexation, I think is the word for this, where we get some cohesive single-track mind and a future plan so that we can really step on the gas and get that place up to par.
All right, and then just one comment. Should you not be successful today in being appointed, I really want to encourage you to apply for a commission. I feel that your expertise would be great on a commission as well.
That is my intention.
Thank you. We don't want to lose good citizens like that.
And actually, Vice Mayor, I think that statement will hold true to everybody, even if you're not selected here today. Obviously, you want to be involved in the city, and serving on our commissions is a great step towards all of that, so, thanks again. Councillor Ward, your question about masks?
I'm a huge believer in private enterprise. I've also seen what it can do firsthand to a business when they have to shut down for three months, when they rely on traffic, and when it's nationwide, when your business is wholesale, and people are just like, we don't have, we're not open, we can't place an order. So, yeah, that's where I stand. I am...
Thank you, and thank you for your interest.
Councillor Sayley?
Is there anything else that you would like us to know?
No, I'm just, I'm determined. I want to see Kingman grow and not just in like a Dollar Tree and paycheck advance type of way. I want to see less chains and more individual businesses where we have more food options, where we have more shopping options. And also, I mean, we're like right in the middle of everything with Vegas, Phoenix, LA. where we have more food options, where we have more shopping options. And also, I mean, we're like right in the middle of everything with Vegas, Phoenix, LA, Albuquerque, being on the I-40 and the 11, and them not knowing what they're going to do with California. I think we have a very strong opportunity with that rail line to become a huge hub for future growth in industrial and commercial ways. I mean, I have so many things going off the top of my head right now. I feel like I'm going to start, you know, rambling. So I'll cut it short. Any other questions?
I think we're good. Jengus, thank you.
Thank you.
Tingwei Chavez?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, county attorney, and, I mean, sorry, city attorney, and the city manager. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself today and express my interest in applying for this position. My name is Tingwei Chavez, a Kingman citizen for nearly 12 years. I have been working, serving county for 10 years already. And currently, I'm working at the Mojave County Attorney's Office, Civil Division. I'm a attorney assigned to various departments, including Public Works, Finance, HR, Mojave County MCEBT, also Economic Development, and Assessor's Office, Treasurer's Office. And we all know Kingman is a growing community with population, housing, the ongoing interchange programs, projects, and also the downtown Kingman, street skate projects. I just, how exciting just by mention of all those. And I would like to have an opportunity to join the city council and participate in future projects for Kingman. I can help Kingman grow with my knowledge and experience. And if chosen to attend city council, I will be immediately ready for our next meeting Tuesday next week. Because that's pretty similar to what I'm doing right now. I have the knowledge and background, and I love what I'm doing. And I'm eager to learn more. I'm eager to learn Kingman, our community. And I'm ready and willing and ready to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you, Tingwei. Mr. Savage's question about running the election. Do you want me to? You can.
Oh, no, it's okay. I have...
Yours and Smiley's are pretty easy to remember all the times.
They're wild cards.
Yeah, well, you and Counselor Saly are wild cards.
Counsel Savage?
It's a good thing, by the way.
I have no intent to run election. I see this as one year, a great opportunity to learn about Kingman. And what I'm currently doing right now is pretty much exactly the same thing, except one's for county, the other one's for city. I think this is a great opportunity for me to learn Kingman and grow strong with the community. And if I was going to run, I'm not going to. I would not sit here today. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Tingwei, thank you so much for your interest. What do you see as Kingman's greatest challenge at this moment in time?
So I believe not just Kingman, Mojave County, lots of people talking about water issue. And I think at this point, county doing great. We have a moratorium going on and things like that to help slow down and something about the non-irrigation expansion. So so far, I'm not too concerned about that part. I think just my point of view, Kingman is a growing community with a population. Lots of people moving in. So I believe the housing and also the healthcare providers will be a big issue because just too many people moving. But most of people are just for the retirement or for some sort. Not enough people providing service, labor, or any more intensive contribution to the community. So I think we have a gap between the people who receive the service and who, people who provide the service. So I think that's the biggest challenges in Kingman right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Counselor Ward's question, of course, about masks.
Yes. I'll answer both mask and also about the shutdown. So right now, it's October 2023. I believe we're still in the pandemic. I mean, they say it's over, but people still worrying about COVID-19 all the stuff. And it depends on what definition of a pandemic. And I would say I was opposed to the mask mandate and the shutdown because as we can learn from the experience and history, even after the shutdown and the mask mandates, we're still in a pandemic era. So I would say the best choice is to have a very clear structure, policy, letting people know so we can still efficiently operate the city without slowing down the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Saly.
Is there anything else you would like us to know?
I'm glad I didn't use my cheek today. And I'm really happy to talk to all of you today. Thank you.
Okay. Once again, thank you. Okay, thank you, Tingwei. Chris Wertenberger?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, intern, city manager, city attorney. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. I heard quite a bit this afternoon. I'm one that speaks from the heart. You've got some good candidates here, darn good candidates. I would even vote for them if they went on the ballot. I moved back here after, since '81. I first got here in 1967. I have seen changes in Kingman. I've seen growth. There is problem areas. They need to be worked on. But that's with city and citizens getting involved and working with each other. That's the only way it's going to change. I love the place that I bought up on Camelback. It's peace, quiet after being away. And I feel I have new ideas, but know the old stomping ground quite well on some things. Some things have changed. But I feel I can contribute to the team effort to ensure that we have communications between the city and the citizens and what our desire of growth is and how we present ourselves. And I know I am kind of tickled to be back here. I really am, because it is the climate I want. I served this country for 30 years in the United States Navy, and I'm very proud to be a veteran. And I'll tell you what. The bad point about Kingman is, there's only one really bad. Where did the mosquitoes come from? I'm telling you, this was like, where? But the brightest point of coming back to Kingman, this VA outpatient clinic is the best care I've had in 30 years in the military. Those people walk on water to me. I mean, they are just fantastic. They take care of our veterans. I am tickled.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Mr. Savage's question, of course, about...
Why I didn't run is because I haven't reacquainted myself, reacquainted myself back into the area, what the community feels, that I have friends here. I hear complaints, concerns, even I had concerns that I tried to work with the previous city manager on and got nowhere. So I will either come to city council. I like to handle things at the lowest level possible before it gets public knowledge and puts mud on the city of Kingman. You know, it doesn't need to be that way. You need to handle it at the lowest level possible. And so getting myself reacquainted with the new citizens here, the old ones, what's going on, I wasn't ready. And then shortly, right about that time, my wife's heart stopped. She had to have a pacemaker. She has had a concussion. I've had to deal with all that, plus try to unpack, which I'm still unpacking. Because, believe me, when you get our age and you bring everything with you, like 6,000 pounds of rock, I'm a rockhound. Okay, so I was not ready for that. If I do have an opportunity as service council members, I want to work with both sides to ensure that it goes both ways. But yeah, I didn't feel I was ready. Am I? I don't know if I would run for it. I picked up a package to run for the rest of this term. And I'm willing to give it a shot. And being a military man, I'm dedicated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Hi. Do you go by Chris or Christopher?
Either one.
Okay, Chris. So we are a pro-growth council with economic development at the forefront of a lot of our decisions. Can you tell me how you feel about that?
I'm all for growth, 100%. The biggest problem I see here is getting this interchange done, getting that bypass over there so Costco, something there could get in here. I'm all for growth and all for education, big on that. I see that's the biggest problem, but I'm pro-growth. I see it here. I'm only disappointed there's not Lowe's here. I like Lowe's too. But there is Home Depot, and I go there all the time. And I've listened to complaints about in, about the city and not doing this, city not doing that. True, it's not. But you got to look on the other side of the fence. Look what they're up against. Look at what they have to come up with, money, budget. And if the cost of groceries, the gasoline goes up for us, citizens, what do you think it's doing for the rest, including the city, including the businesses here? So I think there is work, but I don't think everybody's looking at both sides of the fence.
All right, thank you. And you did answer my second question with what you think the biggest challenge in our Kingman community is.
Is get those, get those in.
Yep, we're working on it.
I like Wendy's once in a while. I like Black Bears. I've been down there three times. That's a hazard. That is a dangerous place down there. I'm surprised more people haven't been hurt.
I agree.
I go the back way, Bill Springs, and that's still a hassle to get in and out of there.
Yep.
I'd like to see it, definitely.
It's coming. That's an ADOT project, but we're going to get the other two going too.
Across my fingers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Your question, I'll answer right away. Higher authority tells you to do it, you do it. Do I agree with it or disagree? That should be on the individual. Me and my wife, since she had to have a pacemaker put in and everything else, I wear a mask most of the time. Why? Because she doesn't need to go through the hassles of getting COVID or anything else. I'm up on my shots, everything else. But I tell you what, that's individual. And I don't want to see anybody shut down, "Oh, you can't get a loaf of bread? You can't get..." No, wrong answer. There's ways around it. We can work with it. So I'm not for it. I think that should be an individual thing. And it shouldn't even be at city council even, because that should be the individual citizen deciding whether they want to wear one or not. And they shouldn't be looked down on or either way, whether they wear it or don't.
Thank you.
Counselor Saly.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Yeah, you've got some fine candidates here. You know, when I was, my last year here, '75, '76, I was kind of bored. So I had to go see the dean out at the college. I had to see the principal so I could carry a full load out at college. There is avenue, but there's things to do besides computers and technology.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for the opportunities.
I don't, next is Erin Rica, but I don't see him here. Annie, you haven't heard from Ms. Rica?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm sure he would like us to consider his application, though, so as far as that goes, counsel. Deborah Adler?
Good afternoon. I appreciate Mayor, Vice Mayor, respected council people, our interim city manager and city attorney, the opportunity to address you today and express my interest in this position. I'm going to refer you to my statement. I am going to reiterate the opening where I said this is an exciting time for Kingman. We're on the brink of economic and cultural expansion that I believe and know will bring us to even greater opportunities for jobs, for recreation, entertainment, while retaining a family-friendly community that appeals to both tourists and to prospective new residents as well as our current residents. In addition to the information I did give you, I did serve for a period on the airport commission prior to when the city took over that management and appreciated that opportunity. I have been, I have served on the, on CART. However, a number of schedule conflicts have led to me needing to release that seat to someone who can, can make that commitment and be a contribution.
Okay. Mr. Savage's question, of course, about, did you not have any interest in '22? And are you planning on running in '24?
You know, I picked that packet up. I picked that packet up, and I allowed whatever circumstances or whatever. I didn't complete that motion. Got rid of all that baggage. I'm here now, and yes, intend to run for that, absolutely.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I really appreciate, Deborah, your comments about economic prosperity. So I won't ask you my economic development question and my pro-growth question. I think you, I think you answered that. I do want to ask you, though, what do you think our Kingman community's greatest challenges at this moment in time?
You know, I drove for transport, well, heck, I drove for Kingman cab for a while, a number of years back. So I had a lot of opportunity every single day to talk to people, to listen to people, and find out what are the concerns. And I think that overall, we're doing, the council's doing an awesome job in the areas of growth and management. I applaud you. I saw a concern, and I see it still as far as the youth, of being able to retain the youth. If our young people don't feel there's an opportunity and their whole mindset is get out of Dodge as soon as you graduate, then we lose an important resource of the city, you know? And so being able to manage our growth, manage our vision in a way that the youth clearly see there is an opportunity for them to stay here, to build careers, to have families, and be successful, that ensures our overall growth as well.
All right, thank you. That's all for me.
Okay. Counselor Ward's question, of course, about masking.
You know, it's been scientifically proven that the masks that were required weren't effective anyway. So no, it needs to be an individual choice. And in a time when so much was being, you know, held down, holding down the economic growth of any community is not a smart decision in my mind. So no, I don't... So no, I don't agree with either one of those measures.
Thank you. Counselor Sayley.
Yes, I wanted to ask you, I am the liaison to the Transit Commission. I just saw your resignation come across. And I am sorry to see you leave that commission. But I wanted to ask you about, you just mentioned that it was due to time constraints, not being able to make meetings. And City Council is even more meetings, more time that has to be spent. And so I just wanted to make sure that you would be able, you'd be available to make those meetings and to spend time on this job.
Absolutely. It just, the particular time of that meeting, I engineer a radio show.
Oh, okay.
So it just wasn't possible for me to be teching and even to be there by Zoom at the same time.
Got you, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Deborah, thank you again.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to add in terms of your question, which you didn't ask about economic growth, the importance of helping the citizens to understand that they do have a role. I see that, you know, people stand back because they truly believe it doesn't matter, that they don't make a difference. So my main goal for being effective would be to reach out into the community, not just, and the meet and greets are great. They're really good, you know? Come, let's meet at a restaurant, or let's do this. But to do more really, and I mentioned this in my letter, on location. Go reach people where they work, where they live, and find out, you know, what they're thinking. And let them know, and let them see that what they say does come back and gets turned into action. Because that's really, you know, that's an essential part of it. It's one thing to say, yeah, we hear you. But then it doesn't turn into any kind of action. And then they feel, well, see, there it is. I'm very, very pro-government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And it's got to be people involvement. And we, as leaders, need to be able to evoke that participation and let them know that they are effective.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Elliot Shalou, as mentioned earlier, is not here today, but he also would like us to consider his application. So next, Mr. Brandon Laumeister.
Hello, counsel, mayor, vice mayor. As many of you know, I currently sit on the Commission for the Airport Industrial Park as one of the commission members. A little bit about me, I graduated high school here in 2002, went into the Navy afterwards, came back in 2018, decided I wanted to try to get involved, but didn't know exactly how. Went to run for City Council in 2022, but wasn't sure what exactly I was doing. So I got some guidance to join a commission first and try to get my feet wet. I also went through the Citizens Academy with Cherish over there. And then after that, I decided that this was something I definitely wanted to do. I have a lot of ideas, a lot of similar sentiments to many of the other prospective candidates and council members as far as the growth of the community, the rights of the citizens, the freedoms, the personal responsibility that people need to take with our community. I have a deep sense of pride. Like I said, I did grow up here. So for me, coming back, it was really nice. I enjoy seeing the growth, but I also saw some of the headaches that it caused. For example, Stockton Hill's definitely an issue right now where the interchange is an I-40 as well as downtown. But downtown, since I was a kid, has always been an issue. So I definitely, if I was to be appointed on here, if we ever get to a point where we have to come together to pressure ADOT or the county or others to do what needs to be done, then I definitely am on board with that. With that being said, if you guys have any questions for me.
Well, let's start with Mr. Savage's question. Mr. Savage.
Thank you. You answered both my questions. And thank you for serving on the Airport Commission.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
You answered most of my questions, too. Thank you for your service on our commission and your comments about economic development. So I think that's it for me.
Great. Counselor Ward's question about masking.
Personal responsibility and personal freedom. It's whoever's choice that needs to be made. I do believe that we also are a community, and we should be responsible towards each other as well. With that being said, I don't think masks should be mandatory. I did live in a country where they did mask quite frequently in Japan. It was something that they did out of a cultural custom, especially if they were sick or during allergy season. So I'm not unaccustomed to seeing it, but I do think that it is something that the individual should be able to decide on their own.
Thank you. Counselor Sayley.
Is there anything else that you would like us to know?
Yes. So I am running. I have filed my letter of intent. I am gathering signatures right now for the four-year term. The reason being is because I want to be able to serve the city that I love so much for the longest period of time that I possibly can. So if I was to be appointed to this, this would be simply for me just a fantastic opportunity and great extension for me to be able to get out there and do the things that I know that I'm capable of doing for this wonderful city.
Okay. Brandon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Neiman.
Good afternoon, counsel. Can you hear me? Mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name's Frank Neiman. I'm the owner and co-founder of Sea Dog Merchants downtown on Beale, small little antique shop. My journey to Kingman began in 2018 when my wife and Valerie and I decided to relocate here from California. For the last 16 years, I was employed by C.H. Robinson, the largest non-asset-based freight brokerage company in the world. Probably see their blue boxes roll through town on the railroad all the time. I oversaw their North American Warehouse Real Estate Division, which totaled roughly 11 million square feet and 750 employees. At the end of May, I made a difficult decision after 16 years to resign, to get back to spend more time with my family, more work-life balance. It's difficult when you travel a lot and you have to drive to Vegas to fly out. It's on the road four days a week, home three days a week. Additionally, I want to spend time with my family. Like I mentioned, I have a five-year-old boy named Mason and a three-month-old boy named Maverick, who was just recently born. I really wanted to pursue my passion with the store, spend more time with the family, and really came to that kind of fruition in my life where it wasn't always about work. I had to run 100 miles an hour at work and kind of lost focus on everything else I was doing. In addition to that professional background, I'm a combat veteran of the U.S. Navy. When my wife and I were looking for a city to relocate to, we chose Kingman for its small-town feel and central location. We were out here frequently. My brother is a former KPD officer. And so we spent a significant amount of time out here on vacation, four-wheeling, doing things like that. Also, the rich history of the town, the Kingman Army Airfield, the railroad, the mining heritage just captivated us just, you know, for everything that's been in Mojave County and Kingman. Upon arriving in Kingman, we fell in love with downtown. We decided to open our shop there. We purchased and restored two properties on East Beale, so 209 and 211. We purchased over the last three years, completely rehabbed. One of those is our store now, and the other is Shady Grove Records, which you guys have seen downtown. I was a staunch proponent of the facade improvement program. It took, we were one of the first businesses that used it. We added lighting in front of the building. I don't know if you know, that corner of the street was pretty dark under that awning. That's gone now thanks to the facade improvement. We also sponsored the original post office location signage with the Main Street Tour and Jim Hinckley's program. I have a deep passion for improving our community. I thoroughly enjoyed putting our stamp on the downtown area. Again, been a staunch proponent of downtown infrastructure project. I wrote letters to the council, appreciate the responses, letters to the newspaper. Over the past five years, I've witnessed the growth in Kingman. I've studied every budget, reviewed council agenda, looked at meeting minutes. And based on my observation, I believe there's five key areas that either need a renewed focus or continued focus. Infrastructure improvements, there's a lot coming to this city with ADOT, two I-40 interchanges. That's going to open a lot of area for businesses, potential expansion. Just having those off-ramps is one thing. But I think really capitalizing on what happens around them is a big area of focus. Communication, public outreach is key. You know, obviously, everybody that's here has heard about the road conditions and everybody that's complaining about it. I dug in and was trying to understand how it is that we have some of the largest truck stops in Arizona, and we don't get a benefit from any of that tax revenue. And I was introduced to HERF and understand that, you know, Kingman, Bullhead, Havasu, the amount of revenue we received to repair our roads is completely inadequate. Parks and extracurricular activities, excited about Sunbelt at the end of Airway. But I think that we must focus on providing opportunities and outlets for kids to stay, not want to leave as soon as they graduate high school. Additionally, balanced budget, ensuring that we're, our quality of license, life is setting us up for future success. And then lastly, the biggest one, I think, is attracting the right businesses and industries. We're ripe for growth, we're centrally located, we have a favorable tax environment, favorable cost of living. It's just a matter of attracting those businesses, jobs, and people. I just want to emphasize my commitment to the future of Kingman. I pulled paperwork to run for the two-year, about 100 signatures in. Regardless of whether I'm appointed, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm excited about the future of the city.
Okay. Mr. Savage.
I got half of your question answered.
I'll let you, I'll let you reiterate it because as a, you're a busy man.
Yeah, so.
So is that why you didn't run in 2022?
Yeah, I was on the road four days a week. I had, you know, my wife was, we were at that time considering not, you know.
Frank, would you mind? Yeah, don't pull away from the mic. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, you answered my question. I was a busy man. I was traveling a lot, and I just didn't have the time and it'd be a disservice to the city to do that. I've now got the time and passion. And I've been in Kingman long enough that I feel I truly understand kind of where we're positioned for both good and bad.
Thank you, Frank.
Yep.
Vice Mayor.
So you answered quite a few of my questions. I appreciate that. You're pro-growth, I see.
100%.
Yeah. You gave us five areas of focus. So I'm wondering, what is the one area that you find the most challenging for Kingman in this moment?
Probably the growth piece. I think that attracting industries, both businesses, retail, you know, transportation companies, warehouse providers, things of that nature, I think that's going to present the biggest challenge. I would, I have a fear we're going to get to like a population stall where we're not going to be able to attract additional people to both generate revenue, have jobs, and we're really going to be stuck in this kind of loop of having all of these great things, all of this infrastructure, but no one to use it and it not generating the revenue it should for the city.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate your comment that you have been following the City Council meetings, you have been reading the minutes, you have been. So to me, that shows commitment. So I appreciate your comment for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counselor Ward's question about.
I believe in personal freedom. I'm not, I'm not for mask mandates, and I'm against business closures. I mentioned that we opened, we moved to Kingman in 2018. We opened on September 15th of 2019, my birthday. What is that, September, October? Seven months later, everything shut down. We almost didn't make it. So I've seen plenty of friends and family members, not just in Arizona, who lost their businesses over that. And I don't agree. It's a personal choice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sayley.
First, I want to thank you for buying a couple of properties downtown and fixing them up. You know, it's just been one at a time, but they all make a difference. So thank you for that dedication to downtown. Is there anything else you would like us to know when we make our decision?
I think that the, necessarily about me, but that downtown improvement, obviously, I'm a little biased having a business there. It's a game changer. I mean, if you were at First Friday and you saw the amount of people, I was exhausted. Like usually, we haven't been staying open late because of the work, so we just stay open our normal hours. First Friday, like I almost couldn't handle it. There were so many people. And it was great to see, and everybody was passionate. There was no naysayers. And not necessarily about me, but that was a huge investment on behalf of the city and the government. And it's just, I can't wait to see the full rewards that we reap once it's complete. And to add, I don't know if you interact with the G.C. or the developer, whoever's, talk about genuine concern for business, people that would work with you. You had a concern, they would make a change, they changed their schedule. Like it's just been a, they're an amazing company to work with, so.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Frank, once again, thanks for the positive feedback on that.
Yeah, definitely.
Because of your business down, being downtown here.
Yeah. It's been great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, all of you, once again, thanks for being here. You have made our decision very difficult. You've all, yeah, lots of great questions, lots of great comments. And once again, we appreciate you being here. We need to have a motion then to go into executive session.
Can I say one thing?
Counselor Sayley, do you have a, yes, go ahead.
I wanted to thank each and every one of you. I am blown away by the number of people that applied and then just the quality and your commitment and passion for our city. So I want to thank you. I want to encourage you. I wish I could pick all of you guys so hard that we can only choose one. But I want to encourage you to please, if you don't skip the seat, this seat, then please run, please be on a commission. We have a lot of commission openings right now. I think we have seven. And then there's also the Citizens Academy that will keep going. And if you could apply for that, you learn a lot about the city and how everything works. They're nonprofits that you all would be perfect for. So please stay involved, and we want to keep seeing you at the meetings. So with that, I will make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Any disagreement? Nope, none at all. Thank you, Counselor Walker. Thank you, Councilor Walker.